Okay, so I have a recording.
Okay. Alright, so we call the meeting to order. You have the list of participants for tonight. Um, let's see, ooh, that agenda is little for these eyes right now.
If I can make it bigger. I'm trying to see if I can make it bigger. Trying to pull it up on this.
Lower right corner, there's a slide bar that you can move. It has a hundred percent on the far, yeah, right there. Perfect.
Oh, yeah. Perfect.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, wait, too much zoom. Well, you know what?
That's perfect. Okay.
Alright, so I'm gonna add, I'm gonna make a correction to add in Bethany for attendance for last month.
Alright, so are these the minutes from last month's meeting?
Yes.
Or if folks had the opportunity to review the minutes from the November meeting, did we take a couple of minutes to allow you to do that? Will that be helpful?
Yes.
And why are you, why are you going through the minutes? I was trying to go by memory. I didn't, I'm not sure if I got the right people for the second, for the approval and the second of the minutes. If you're scrolling through, you see that you are the one that, remember that you did the second for ending the meeting or agreeing on something. Just let me know and I can make the edits.
Okay, thank you. Are folks reading on the screen? Do you need them scrolled up? If you can let Angelica know.
Yeah, I need it scrolled up.
Okay.
I thought it was just me.
This way or no?
I figure somebody must be.
This way or the other way?
The other way. To the bottom.
Are we good to go to the next page or still?
I am. I'm okay.
Too much. It's either too much or not enough.
Are folks all set with the review of the minutes? Or do you need more time? If you need more time, just share.
I'm all set.
Are there any revisions to the minutes that are needed before we look to approve them?
I do have an addition. I thought that on that last, if you scroll up just a little bit, when we talked about truancy, we have a whole protocol that we follow before someone begin, begin, becomes truant. It's a chronic absenteeism protocol. So I'd feel more comfortable if it says that I shared the process that the school uses for tracking chronic absenteeism and truancy.
Okay.
Okay, so chronic, so at chronic absentee, absenteeism and truancy.
Perfect. Yep, right after tracking. Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other revisions needed?
I'll move approval.
There we go. Love it, Roger. Thank you. We have a move to, we have a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
I'll second. It's Carla.
Carla, thank you, Carla. Are all in agreement?
Hi.
Yeah, everybody's in agreement?
Aye.
Okay, there we go. So the minutes are approved? And we can move to, oh, sorry. Agenda up on my.
I'm just gonna pull up the agenda.
Okay, great. Trying to work off of three pieces of equipment here. It's not working well. Alrighty. Alright, so it looks like we're at the point now where we have new business?
Actually, I, I'd like to ask a couple of questions about issues that were raised last, at our last meeting.
Okay.
I was interested in the life skills program. I'm wondering if we've got, had made any progress in increasing the number of young people who participate.
So we still haven't done any more, more kids for the life skills. What we're gonna do is we have about three more weeks left, well, actually, two more weeks left for this actual quarter for programs. We're gonna restart our programs again in January. So it's gonna focus on this month with trying to target and recruit more kids specifically for that life skills program, having more time to do some marketing recruitment for that group, because I really feel like that's, that group is really needed. All of them are important, but that one, I feel like is a key component for, for the youth to have that experience.
The other comment I had, had to do with truancy. JRV had a referral for a young man who's truant, has been for quite a while. And coincidentally, Shipman-Gooan publishes a weekly case study. And they happened to have one which was about truancy and went through all the things that schools need to do before, to deal with truancy and, at least in my opinion, before they refer cases to the JRV. As a result of circulating that to JRV members, I understand that the school now is going to meet with the parents and have a PPT. And that will probably occur before the JR, we ever have a JRV hearing, if that continues to be referred. I'm just concerned that if there's a school out there in Bloomfield who is feels the necessity to do more than they did before they referred a case to JRV, that there may be other schools in the same situation. That's just a comment.
Okay.
But I, I think, you know, there is a, there is a, there are regulations about what a student's attendance is, is not satisfactory. There's supposed to be a PPT to discuss that and involve the parents as well. So I just throw that as an observation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll share that, I'm gonna share that too with Tiffany as well, because we still have that truancy referral. Do you want me to start? I'm gonna start with the youth services programs. I'm actually gonna pull up a month report. I almost finished it, but I'm just gonna go through and add some stuff. I'm just gonna switch my screen.
Okay.
Where's my laptop is? Not allowing me to scroll over to the. Hi, yah, okay. So this first column we have for, currently for November for JRVs, we had five active cases. One case has closed. There has been no cases that has been sent to court. There's no JRV hearings were scheduled. I know Tiffany had to reschedule the recent one, so she can get more information for the truancy case. We also had a group meeting for the restorative practice for JRV, and we reviewed two cases that Tiffany had pending for JRV. And with that, we had some good conversation in terms of what's an appropriate case for JRV. One of the cases that we have in mind, the child has a lot of outside services and a lot of stuff going on in terms of a lot of stuff in terms of like mental health referrals and behavioral stuff, and she has a lot of supports in place. So we're looking at helping, you know, the family instead of taking it on as a JRV case, working with finding out ways to support the, the parent and the child beyond the JRV referral. Let's see. We also looked at our restorative practices in terms of how we're gonna work that stuff into our JR, JRV. A lot of things we're already doing in terms of the process of the JRV, but we looked at in terms of the room setup, possibly what we have, whenever we get back in person, have a circular meeting, like everyone's around the table, instead of the divide of the parent and child on one side and all the board members on the opposite side. I'm gonna make a note for myself to.
Go ahead.
I have to make a note to send out. I did put together for, they requested, it's like circle prompt question that you asked. I did find them. I just have to email them out to everybody. So I'm gonna make myself a note to send those out.
I would just make an additional comment, that I, I think one of the major thrusts of the restorative practices that interests me anyway, is to try to make it less threatening to the youth and get the youth to focus more on what can be done to do things better or to resolve the issues, rather than who's to blame and what the punishment is. And, you know, try to get it to be a more positive experience for both the youth and the family, so that we move forward in a positive manner, rather than, okay, you did something bad and why did you do it? And here's, here's what your consequences are.
Yeah, because that also helps too, to piggyback off of Roger. That helps too, to get the, the child and the parents to buy into the service and also to buy into doing the work to make the changes in terms of, you know, what the, I don't wanna say consequence, but, you know, based on what the board and the family decide as the action to do, we really want them to follow through and, and learn something from it. And we don't wanna see them back in the JRV. And also, too, we mentioned about having, working on having a more open dialogue with the family too, when you're in that JR, JRV process, just being inclusive and just having that dialogue with them. At that point, you know, you should feel comfortable stating what you need to the parents, that way they can kinda share their opinions and you can kinda come together with a good contract for the service.
So, A- Angelica, so now would that be depending on the severity of the case or is just that for any case? I'm saying, because if, is one thing poking somebody in the eye with a pencil as opposed to, or getting in a fight as opposed to stealing something out of CVS?
Um, I mean, the thing would be, the goal would be for all of them, but obviously if there's something, you know, I don't wanna say harsher, but you do wanna make sure that they're learning something from it, based on the severity of the case. So overall, you know, some of those difficult cases, we do, we did mention about meeting earlier as a team to kind of review the case, to kind of really go through about what, what actions we should take place for that particular youth, because you don't want it to get where the youth just say, oh, this is easier. I'm not learning anything from this and gonna continue to do the offense. So it's finding something creative that's gonna, you know, hold them accountable and they learn something from it. And it's more of a, it's, I don't know how to say it, but like you're making it, um, serious, you know, try to find something for them to do that's serious that's gonna impact. So I agree, some kids would just be like, oh, well, I just, you know, severely beat somebody up and they just told me to do an essay, you know. Obviously, we would have something that matches the, the offense that what we give them to do for the contract will, you know, will match the weight of the offense that they did. Is that, is that clear? Does that, does that answer your question, Donna? Your statement?
Yes.
Each, each case is, as you know, is different and, but the, I think the overall approach is to try to make something positive come out of, out of it as a and that, I mean, we tried to do that anyway, with the essays, we have them written, that sort of thing. But just to focus on positivity and in, and, and having it not look as much like a judge and jury and a defendant as we have done it in the past.
And a lot of times, there's a lot of things that, when you start pulling back the layers, there's a lot of things that's going on with these families and kids beyond what the fence was, when you start to really dive deep, you're like, oh, okay, it's not only for, for example, truancy, but it might be some family dynamics. There might be some issues with, you know, accessibility. So as we start to really dive into the cases, we usually learn a lot more about the families and what their needs are.
And that's why I think we're gonna probably experience more meet, pre-hearings than we, we have in the past. So we.
I agree.
You get a deeper dive.
Mm-hmm, yes. For foster care, we are foster care support worker, she has returned back to the office. She's been out for a few weeks for some medical leave. So we're just getting her back to speed in terms of what we've been doing for programs. But in the meantime, we have currently ten families and thirteen youth. We have two new youth that started with us and one youth we're still pending to get their application in. And then we have one youth that left because they aged out of the, aged out of the program. Um, I have a question for you, Donna. For foster children, when they age out at eighteen, I wanted to put together like an informational session for the foster care support worker. We're trying to find ways that we can connect with the worker to kind of have a, kind of like a wraparound for them to say, okay, you're getting eighteen. These are the things that DCF provides to you. Maybe we can kind of have more of, um, like intentional meetings with those families to make sure they're prepared by the time that child turns eighteen. Because we had this one kid that aged out and we just lost track of his, of their birthday. And they were like, oh, wait, they're not in the program of foster parents. Like, no, they're not, um, here, they're I'm like, what? Where do they go? So I guess for us, just maybe learning more about the process from DCF, so we can kind of look at our kids that are aging out and say, hey, let's get a plan in place. It kind of be more collaborative, because we are talking a lot with the foster parents, just kind of, you know, making sure they're prepared and stuff.
Okay, so we have a specific policy connected to youth that choose to remain with us post eighteen. And so it, we, there are some things that the staff, the workers need to do to prepare those kids, those youth earlier on, so you don't focus so much on the eighteenth birthday. You're really looking at six months prior to that, planning, sharing, the worker sharing information, connected to services available to them on a voluntary basis, because they will now be adults. But we service youth up, we can do youth up to the age of twenty-three. So it probably makes sense for me, I could find the policy so that you have some technical language on there and then you can, what questions you have, connected to timeframes that make sense for us, for you to connect with the worker. But the worker, the worker should be letting your staff know if this child signed on or not to maintain a voluntary status post eighteen. So I can get you that information.
Okay, yeah, because we were wondering, like, the staff were like, what happened to this kid? We, they're all like, we wanna know, you know, if they're, you know, doing something productive, and they're still in school still, they're eighteen, but still in seniors. So we was, they were kind of like, you know, wishing they can find out. We just was concerned, you know. I was like, well, I don't have any answers. The worker didn't get back to us.
Yep.
We're trying to reach out to see.
Which should not happen. So clearly, yeah, well, so we can talk offline that.
Okay.
At all.
Okay. Um, let's see. So some of our events that we did, we had a youth anxiety incorporated with the norm. So we had a cafe around that discussion for our foster care support network. One big thing that we're incorporating with these sessions is our virtual food sessions. We're focusing on healthy eating with this, with this group. So we actually had the kids give us a recipe. They made chicken quesadillas. And we actually got all the ingredients and delivered it to their houses and we do a Zoom cooking. So they actually into eating healthier. So now when we have our in-person workshops, we usually try to add healthy components as well. And the kids are buying into it. They're, they're actually eating what we make and they're, they're trying to make healthier options. So we think we're gonna keep this virtual food session as a staple for our program each month. We did human trafficking workshop. So what we did, we had a presenter, but the presenter had the cancer because of COVID stuff. So we actually watched a video on PBS on human trafficking and we had a good discussion with the kids about how to stay safe and what to look out for in terms of human trafficking. And then they did a youth cafe on what is racism with the group. For our police and youth group, they called, just called the Bloomfield Police Department Youth Group, they had a activity on other than influence activity they did with the group. And we haven't been able to meet in person. So right now, we're back and forth between on online programs for the police and youth programs. So we do have a virtual family movie night. So we're trying to coordinate a movie night with the, with the participants for the program. And we're hoping we can meet one more time in person to do end of the year event as, as well with this group. And we're hoping we get kids to come in. I know the schools have been just remote. So, well, we have a group planned for this week. So we're hoping that the kids are still able to come in, like the parents are willing to still have them come into small in-person groups that we have. Our project three thirty, which is our leadership group, we had a virtual meeting on their social issues. So they focused on their social issue that they wanted to work on was child hunger and, oh gosh, drawing a blank, child hunger and drawing a blank on this one. They had two that they're gonna work on. So they're gonna meet in person actually this week, wanna have them work on their project. We did in-person paint night and we had them invite a guest. So that was a good turnout. We had an empowerment theme that we had for the night and we had different cocktails and we had food. So it was good to see the kids have some type of fun setting, something different from our normal meetings that we have. And then we had another virtual, virtual meeting on research and their social issue. Came back to me, they, they wanted to do mental health for youth. So we talked about if they were concerned, they were anxious, I feel depressed, where can they get resources and services to? And a lot of the youth said they didn't really see much posted in schools. So we talked about, well, how can we get a campaign out to get the word across to youth, like if you're experiencing anxiety, these are some places that you can get help at, find another caring adult to be another source as well. So we talked about how can we get mental health to not have that harsh stigma and to really educate youth, because a lot of youth are experiencing our group themselves. We're talking about their struggles with logging on, staying focused, the, I think, the second quarter grades. Is it the second quarter has already came out or the first quarter's closed?
The first, hi, Dr. Mackey.
Quarter closed.
Yeah, first quarter, no, no, the first quarter closed back in first week of November. We have progress reports coming out December eighteenth.
So a lot of the youth talked about how the grades have, you know, were impacted by just being all virtual. They either didn't have stuff turned in or just having a hard time focusing and getting to work in, or they're playing catch-up, trying to turn in late stop to, and then they moved into the second quarter. So we talked a lot about the stress and time management and really trying to get these kids to understand how to manage your time, how to find the balance. And one good conversation I had with some of the youth, I had a particular youth met with me offline. And we started talking about your routine and a lot of them are doing their work in their bed. I'm like, and they're falling asleep. I'm like, well, your bed is for you to sleep in. So you shouldn't be there doing schoolwork. So let's try to find a different location. So even with those conversations, finding a different location in the house was a struggle too, because everybody's at home. Everybody's on Zoom calls. It wasn't really a quiet spot. So if you have a youth that really needs that quiet and focus, it can be a struggle to just log in and be active when there's so many distractions. So just hearing some of their challenges is, you know, helping me to really look at, well, what are some of their needs for youth in general and how we can help support with this to keep them, you know, successful at school, to keep them logging on. The motivation too was another issue. They just weren't motivated. It's like, oh, I just, they know they needed to get the work done, but they just weren't motivated to, to do the work.
Angelica, can I ask a question? What are the goals or the outcomes expected from the two social issues projects?
The goals for that one is just to have, it's more like a community, community awareness. So the goal is to see, the goal is to have the outreach for the, for youth in general to know where they can get resources. Like my goal is to, I don't know how I wanna have this type of portal, but I want it to be where, you know, if we can, if I can get connected with the school too, that we can have this information readily available for the youth to access. So it sounds like this, I mean, for me, I know the school has things, it's just a matter of if the kids aren't looking for it, they're not gonna know. Okay, I can go here to get X, Y, and Z. So for me, I guess I have to start with trying to locate some of the social work to see what type of services the school is offering for like either anxiety or kids are coming with depression, like what, what does the school offer and try to collaborate? I think that would be the best avenue to see what's, what is currently available and how we can, how I can work with the school to just distribute this information for the youth to have.
They picked two great topics, so that's awesome.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Let's see. Um, we did have a community event. We had a virtual workshop with Dr. Gary Rule that talked about youth anxiety and coping. And there were twenty-three participants. I wasn't able to log on to that meeting, but we didn't get as many participants as we would have hoped. The last time he came in person, we had about almost seventy people, but I think it's just when we had this on this November sixth, it was a lot going on. It was right after, during the election and all, all kinds of stuff going on. So I think maybe the timing wasn't the best for this workshop. And, and overall, I think families just have a lot of things, just a lot going on. So I'm thinking this piggybacks offer the topic that we wanna work, work on with the kids, so I can use some of that content to kind of have as a baseline to, um, to get this stuff out. Because I really think this is something that's gonna be here. It's, it's gonna be here a while. It just, for me, is the goal too, is I wanna get parents to understand too, what are some of the signs of anxiety and depression, that they can know where they can get resources for their child as well too. So overall, just having more dialogue and communication, just getting information out to the community, so they know what's available. Bethany or Frank, do you know if there's any current things that's going on with the school in terms of like mental health, like the topics of anxiety or depression? If there's any resources currently available to students?
So we have, our climate specialists have been working on different things. Frank, do you have something specific you're doing at the high school?
Uh, well, a lot of our, every morning, we have ten minutes dedicated in the morning for social emotional learning, you know, trying to build that social emotional base.
Learning, uh you know, trying to build that social emotional base. Um and a lot of the questions, no, I shouldn't say a lot, once a week or so. There are questions that are geared towards, you know, health check-ins, things like that. We we've been kinda, I've been working very closely with Amy Paluska, our social worker, um and and we both agree that. To assume that everybody is having anxiety and to assume that everyone is is. Is be traumatized by everything that's going on is slippery slope, we don't wanna kinda. Project the idea of fear, the idea that kids should be afraid of things that are going on right now. Um so we've been making sure that we're balancing the, you know, the anxiety that people are feeling, but at the same time. Keeping things positive and celebrating things and making, you know, letting them know that, you know, there are still, you know. Glimmers of light somewhere, and it's okay to be happy, not everything is doom and gloom. Although it feels like it sometimes, it's okay to be happy, so yeah, it's it's kind of been a balancing act.
Hi, this is Carla, uh my daughter's in tenth grade at um Bloomfield High School. And I I'm listening to her classes all the time, and one um class in particular I wanna mention is where um the gym teacher. I can't think of her name right now. Um she does a good job with like with them with meditating and. And giving them some pointers, not only just, you know, being physical healthy, but being mentally healthy also.
Yeah, that's great, um it's either Coach Danath Tullock Reed or Coach Tammy Shondelmeyer.
It's it's Coach Tammy, it's Coach Tammy, actually.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, we we're doing stuff like that, we have uh. Um a lot of clubs, there seem to be more clubs have emerged uh this year. You know, there's the. I I I'm actually running one myself, it's uh our Workout Wednesday, which promotes that kinda stuff, that physical outlet. And um you know, we do yoga there too, so yeah, there there's uh, there are opportunities, absolutely.
We also have our morning meetings um that are. Uh different people lead in different schools and there is a focus on the positive, there is a focus on deep breathing and. Clearing your mind and um, you know, depending on the age group of the students, but uh we do have different um. Different components of our morning meetings that on a regular basis do address uh feelings. To support the emotional well-being of our students.
You know, I have them taking notes, so I'm gonna actually add some of these students that we have for our project three thirty, if they're actually utilizing some of these. You know, are they finding it helpful, if they are using it, and if they're not, you know, saying, hey, there are some things being offered, now is this just? Time they log in in the morning time, these morning meetings, or is it with um a certain? Uh it's a certain space that they log in to access this morning meetings that you have, Bethany, or is it a standard?
Yeah, it depends on the school, uh but for example, at Carmody Race Intermediate School, Ms. Richters is the climate specialist there. And she has a morning announcement that she records and that um the kids listen to when they're in their classes, so. We can't do the whole school listening to it at the same time, so we, you know. Our teachers bring it into a particular part of their class, so that they do get the same announcement, um you know, to connect. The birthday announcements, you know, to celebrate the students, to to highlight the positive things that are happening.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so what we do uh at the high school is um every every day I make a. I'm sorry, I'm stumbling here, every morning I make a survey or a question and it's a Google form. And I share it with all the teachers and they make their own copy of it. And that's for the first ten minutes of the day, so the school day starts at seven thirty-five, so from seven thirty-five to seven forty-five every day. Uh I I share that discussion question and that's what that time is, so every day in class. Uh with their first period teacher, whether it's period one on Monday Thursdays or their period two teacher on Tuesday Fridays. The classroom teacher is leading the students in a discussion about the uh the topic of the day. You know, like, so, you know, obviously, you know, before we left on Tuesday last week, you know, what are we thankful for, and and you know, stuff along that that. Those lines, today, well, yesterday was Cyber Monday, so we talked about wants versus needs. And, you know, teachers had a discussion about that, today was uh Giving Tuesday, so I had students uh. I I threw out the question about, you know, what is charity, uh is it money, is it time, you know? It, wh- what is charity to you and how can you, you know, spread it, you know, today being given Tuesday? So I kinda look for themes that are going on in the world, you know, things that are going on in the news and. You know, check out that uh those whatever day today is kinda calendars and kinda capitalize on those to make it more relevant.
Okay, I'm just gonna share my screen to pull back up the agenda for. Anybody have any other questions on the youth services updates from last month? If I move on to the. I already covered some of the JR B stuff, or I'm gonna go into the the CAMHS grants, so we actually. I have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with the school to go over. What this grant is gonna look like, so I'm not sure if they're gonna keep us with the same funding amount or if they're gonna reduce it, but what we're trying to do is have a um. Wednesday through Friday supplement for the the CAMHS after-school program. And they actually, um Leadership Services, they found a um program that does more um leadership skills online and they actually teach the the workshops. So we're trying to see we can do a ten-week workshop with that leadership skills that they do virtually. And then for youth services, what we're trying to do is um. Draw a blank, youth services, we're trying to um, so I'm drawing a drawing a blank of what we're doing um. Yes, we're trying to find support for the parents, cuz they wanted the grants to be more in terms of. Supporting the parent and also supporting the child as well, so we wanted to kinda have more an inclusive approach in terms of. Offering like throughout the year, maybe two or three uh online platforms or workshops that the parents can log into to get more information in terms of. Mental health services, it might be in terms of just parenting in general, like. How do you parent with the new norm in terms of everything virtually managing stress? And we also thought about having um tutoring services, but we figured that might be a little bit hard, cuz. Everybody's in different classes and different subjects, so we figured that that piece would be harder, cuz a lot of times the. The parents are also having a difficult time helping with the homework, cuz they're, they just aren't, they just don't know how to do the work. Or they may not have the time to help them, so we're just trying to find a way to have some balance, so. Most of our time for the program will be spent on the leadership piece. And kinda like a mindfulness piece as well and a family support piece. So the other concern that we're having is the parent piece, like how can we get the parents to buy into this piece? And get them on board, cuz they have so many other things going on, and we were back and forth between, what if you had the child that's invested and the parent isn't on board with their piece, but. I mean, we're still with service to child, but we're just trying to figure out how this program is gonna look, considering it's gonna be all all virtual at this point. So we have a meeting with the school, Carmody Race tomorrow, so hopefully we get more um guys in terms of how we're gonna collaborate together to do this program. The school um CAMHS, they mentioned that they wanted to do a um. Like a mentoring type service, and they're gonna have a check-in for the students, but I'm not sure how they were gonna. Divide up the the grant, cuz the grant is just for after-school, like we have a certain amount that we service, particularly for youth services. We have sixteen kids that we service for the year, and I think um Leadership Services takes on seventy-five is the max for. For their piece of the grant, so we're just trying to figure out how the school is gonna work with us to get this information out to the schools, so they. So the parents and the families know this program is existing and is happening and how we can get started with this program, so. So it's it's definitely different too, when you're navigating remotely, you're trying to get um all the parties on board with the schools and you work with more than one department, so. I'm hoping we have a productive meeting tomorrow, so we can have some start to this program. Summer youth employment, um we're looking into thinking about how that's gonna look for next, next summer. So one of the things for the grant that was a requirement was to have um the kids. Work at different work sites and then the work sites eventually would take on some of those kids for employment, one of the. We got away with it last year because the town and covid and everything, so we didn't really have to have kids hired on. But for next year, we're looking at, looking into small businesses that can be a work site, so eventually. Some of those kids would be able to continue on with work through employment, so I was talking to Camilla, we're thinking about. How we can um tap into some of the small businesses for the summer youth employment, to have some of those as the work sites in addition to our. Town departments as work sites for the summer youth employment program. Um I'm not sure how the funding's gonna go, they have a lot of new people that's involved with their department. So I'm just trying to figure out um how that's gonna look for us with funding, last year we had to do a grant um as a new provider. Based on the the supervisor there, she said, for the town, we don't have to do another grant, there's a simple form that we fill out. Our grant should be good for three years, so at least we don't have to do that whole long process again, it's just a matter of stating that you will be a provider again. And I guess once they figure out the funding there, that would determine how many slots that we would get, last, this summer we got twenty-five slots, so. I'm assuming we probably either have the same amount or probably less, depending on how the funding is gonna go for for next year. But my last conversation with the coordinator was in February is when we're gonna meet again to kinda discuss. Summer youth employment and get the ball running, but going through it once, I learned we have to kinda start sooner than that, especially when we have to. Locate and um locate work sites now beyond the town sites and you have to figure out how that technically can be done. In general as well, cuz it's never been done before, so we just have to figure out from um from HR side. How that's gonna look for us when we go out to um get other other um small businesses, cuz I know Vernon, Tana Vernon and Tana Manchester. They are municipalities and they offer the same program and they do um. They contract with small businesses as well for the program, so it's done, so we just have to figure out how we can do it. And I would say we learned a lot from the first year, uh we do plan on using capital workforce again, I guess for me is strategizing um. How to get the recruitment again, I know last year I worked with the school to send out the information through um. The Google Classroom and that was successful, cuz we had over a hundred and forty students that applied, so. For me, it's just figuring out when we get to that point of recruiting for the kids to actually apply for when the applications are available. How to get that connection with the school, so we can get the information out sooner, and another thing I mentioned, they had a debriefing with the providers. I shared that for the DCF slots, they need to get us that information sooner, so we have more time. To work with DCF and the social workers, letting them know what's required for the application, so you guys have time to fill out the applications and get all the um. All the documents that's required, that was a lot of the hangup with all of the sites was just getting that stuff, like the social workers weren't able to get into the offices. Backlog and getting social security cards, so it's just, you know, I I voiced like they need to capital workforce, if the sooner they know the application and the details. Let us know, so we can actually market to DCF sooner, earlier than, you know, everyone else, that way we can get the information. Have everything on board for them to start on time.
Angelica, if you and if you know the basics of what might be needed, sending that out even earlier than you receive it. You know, it's confirmed, then that would be helpful as well.
Okay, so what I can do is pull off the um basic stuff that we needed before, for the most part of, I'm. I'm assuming it'll be the same in terms of, you know, the letter stating that their um DCF is the guardian and then having their social security card and. ID, photo IV, that way that's the information that's needed for their um for them to get paid. So I'll go through the list of what was required and kinda see if I can make a little cheat checklist and say, hey. Applications are gonna be coming out in March or April, there's some things that will be required.
Yeah, and I'll give you the name of the adolescent managers again, so for the Hartford office, so at least you have those as points of contact. Uh to be able to reach out to them earlier.
Awesome, okay. Yeah, cuz what was happening with us, we weren't getting um Bloomfield residents, just getting kids from all over the place, I'm like, wait a minute. I'm quite sure there's some Bloomfield kids that needs that we can service.
Are some of these slots reserved for DCF or they all are in the DCF, how does that work?
Um this year we had five slots that were reserved for DCF and the twenty slots was just for the general, I'm gonna just say general public. Let's see. Alright, so those were all my updates for the new business piece. Anyone have any questions on any of those pieces? Donna, did you wanna move on to the announcements?
Yes, we could go ahead, are there any other programs, the twenty twenty-one programs, any other? Of those you wanna share with us that are?
Oh, I just missed one, oops, yes, for twenty twenty-one, what we plan on doing is each quarter we plan on having um. A continuation of programs, so the next quarter of programs will go from January through March, so we're gonna actually. Roll over some of these existing programs like Project Three Thirty, we're gonna offer to the kids if they wanna continue on, they can stay on and we can recruit a few more. Participants depending on the max group size that we can have at a time. Currently, we can only have ten people in the room, including adults, so that's um. That, you know, that's what we're working with, so typically our max would be between seven and eight kids based on how many staff that's needed. So once we um. When we get to January, we're gonna re-recruit for our Project Three Thirty, if the existing members wanna stay on, they can, if not, cuz they have other obligations, they can leave. And we'll recruit more members for that, our police and youth group, we're gonna do that program again, but we're just gonna get more participants. Cuz we want to try to maximize and get as many kids as we can service, considering we already taken way reduced because of everything, so we're trying to. Redo the group and new group members to service more kids in the community, so the plan is to have the. Policing Youth Group with new members, Project Three, Project Three Thirty, if they want to include existing members or new members. The life skills, I hope to have a good, a good chunk for this quarter to go around for the life skills program. What else, yeah, our. Mentoring group, young men's group, the tri group, that group we're gonna keep with the same members, we really wanna um. Keep track of those kids, cuz the the mentorship piece is a little bit different, so that group is gonna stay with the same same group participant members as well. So this is something new, last year we had it where our youth services program kids stayed with us for the whole duration of the. Duration of the school year, but then we figured, you know, we're we weren't really. Capturing a lot of kids, different kids, we'd get the same kids for everything, so it's been working so far with the. But the quarters having um one quarter with a group of kids, so I'm hoping when we remarket for January, we'll get. More kids for these programs, a lot of people um, you know, they they are signing up, our slots do fill up. So just for some of the groups like life skills, just trying to figure out how to remarket that group, cuz I think um. I think, I think it will fill up, it's just a matter of remarketing to the to the community in terms of what we're doing for that group. So the goal is once we have January, January through March, then we have our last uh group from March through June. And then by that time, we'll be planning on the summer stuff as well, hand in hand with that last quarter for for programs.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now we can move to announcements.
I do have one announcement, I have um. The Department of, I wanna say Mental Health, they have some funding, so there is a program for. Courage to Speak, and it is, I'm just pulling it up on my phone, it's a drug prevention workshop that they have in. So I actually contacted the coordinator of this one, I was trying to have her do a virtual presentation probably in February. The grant is for high school students and the group is, um, for Courage to Speak Foundation. And this person tells about their story about losing their child to drugs and provides guidance to parents to help them reduce the risk of drug use in their families. So they're offering a free workshop. So I'm trying to figure out ways to coordinate with the high school to get this, um, virtual presentation, um. Um, she said they do a pre and a post survey for the training. And then, um, they basically facilitated virtually for this piece. There's two pieces. That one is free and then there's a second piece that you have to pay for is Courageous Parenting One-on-One. And this is focusing on opio- opioid crisis and beyond, and it's taught by a couple facilitators. And they cover, um, addiction and its psychological consequences, abuse and misuse of over-the-counter prescription drugs. Helping children handle stress, understanding denial around children and drugs, dangers of enabling and hands-off parenting. And they go over parenting styles and resources. So what I was gonna do is see how that first free workshop goes with this organization and see, um. If it's something I wanna buy for the, um, for a second workshop. Let's see. Has anyone ever heard of the Courageous Parenting Foundation, Cur- um, the Courage to Speak Foundation? So yeah, so I'm trying to just get that coordinated. So what I'll probably just reach out, um. To the high school to see if this is something that they can do. Frank, do you know if, um, this workshop, if it's something that could be done during the school time? Like during the school day?
No, I highly doubt that. We are, um, we're very crunched for time. We just had to adjust our schedule to try to make more time for, for learning. Um, that, that, that would be very tough.
Uh, I was telling the presenter, I was like, I don't know about that. I'm like, I said, I'll ask, but I don't think we can do anything like that. It'll have to be after, after.
Angelica? What, what's the age group for the presentation?
Um, she said high school, so I'm assuming, um, ninth through twelfth grade.
Okay. Yeah, so we could definitely, I mean, if you find an evening or an afternoon, we could certainly, um, share that information with our parents. At both Bloomfield High and, um, Global Experience.
Okay.
And we do have, um. I don't know that I, we haven't, uh, our October one numbers were, um. Pushed through to, uh, the, we have a collection date and then we have a final submission date with the State Department. And I know that was delayed this year. So while we haven't yet gotten all of our final, um. Um, the final numbers in for our enrollment and for October one. Um, the reason I'm bringing it up is because the R-two report, which is the report that tells us the number of students that are in each of the magnet schools. Locally, um, I know last year we shared that with you and I'd like to put it together again. So that you can have a sense of how many Bloomfield students are in the different magnet schools, especially MLC. Uh, because that's where a good portion of our students, um, you know, when we look at, uh, high attendance rates for Bloomfield families. We have a lot of students that go to MLC. So that's another high school that you might be interested in sharing the, um, information. You know, with that community.
Oh, perfect. Okay. That would be fantastic. I'm trying to work on collaborating together for myself. A list of, you know, sign off here, these are the schools and trying to keep it, you know, organized when I get information. Now, I feel like. I'm missing a lot of chunk of people, you know, when I'm trying to recruit in markets. I feel like I'm missing some of those schools and parents. So, um, at least if I can, um, figure out a way to get the most recent contact, like I'll send a message out to the principal to say. Just introduce myself again in terms of what I do and offer, you know, let them know like, these are some things that's be coming down the pipeline for next year. That to get out to families, just to make that connection with, um, with the schools as well. I'm still, still working on it. I'm like, a year later, I'm still. Trying to forge those connections, but hey, we will eventually get there. Thank you, Bethany.
Any other announcements?
Just one, one comment. Last, uh, we announced last time the, uh, uh, town meeting on marijuana legalization of marijuana. Uh, and I did, but I did attend that. And the churches were speaking. Uh, against it because of their, the concerns about impact on youth. But virtually, everybody else was speaking in favor of it for a variety of reasons. I was concerned that, you know. Maybe we oughta try and guess, depending on one's point of view, uh, some comment from the educational area of town. Um, to our town council and to our representatives, because actually, you had, this, it's the schools who deal with kids. Who, uh, who, who use weed. And although this is supposedly for adults only. Uh, the trickle-down or, or maybe stronger than that impact from, from twenty-one-year-olds who can get it. Now give it to their brothers and sisters, uh, or friends, uh, could be an area of concern, that would impact the school system.
Yeah, Roger, thank you so much for raising that point. I, I right now would need to do some research on that. Just to, uh, look into it and, and bring a group of people together to have that conversation. So. Um, certainly. A really important part and we can certainly follow up in the school district with, uh, what kind of programs and supports. And education we're putting in place, uh, to support our students.
Uh, also, the, um, a couple of our, I would say in general, the town council members seem to be more in favor than opposed. Although a couple of them who have ki- kids in the school system, we're, we're willing to speak against it. So. Um, because they're concerned with the impact on their kids. So the, uh. Uh, if you have, there are town council members who have kids in the school system, who would probably like to have more information if it were available.
Thank you.
Angelica, Roger's mentioning the town council, just kinda reminds me that we still don't have a rap here for this group. Um, any progress with that?
Um, not that I know of. I can follow up with Camilla to see, um, maybe since we have the town manager, um. On board now, a different town manager, maybe we can be able to get a representative that can be a part of this meeting. So I'm gonna put this, uh, follow-up with her tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
It'd be nice if we had someone who had a kid in the school system.
Yes, yes.
Any other announcements from anyone else? Nope, okay. Do we, anything else we need to cover, Angelica? Are you all set?
Um, I am all set on my end.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Uh, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Carla.
Second motion.
All in favor? Everybody says yes, really quickly.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, everybody, thank you.
Bye, everybody. Have a nice holiday. Thank you.
You too.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye, take care.